This will be my job. It's the last day. Bringing them back from the lots.
Yeah. I'm going to be there to gender his best flight tonight.
Town Mayor of Biddle, councillor Nigel Yates and the chief officer, Mrs Sarah Hayden. I'll call upon the Reverend Jan Young Case who will offer a prayer for tonight's meeting.
Well, good evening.
Good evening.
Some of you Methodist ministers, I think some of you have met me already. Let's pray. Heavenly Father, the Bible says blessed is the nation whose God is the Lord Yahweh. How blessed is the town and its people whose local council want to seek your divine guidance? Those we come before you tonight with grateful hearts, recognising the privilege and responsibility entrusted to us as leaders in this community. We acknowledge your presence in our midst and humbly place ourselves before you, knowing that in you we find strength and direction. Hope you are thankful for those who selfishly, selflessly serve our community, who less than abundantly for their dedication and sacrifice. Heavenly Father, we lift up our town and all the various exciting tasks and difficulty challenges that we face before you. Grant us discernment as we make decisions that affect the lives of those we serve. Help us to set aside our personal agendas with hearts inclined to the greater good and the welfare of all. Your presence be felt in every aspect of our community. You bring unity, harmony, peace and love to every household, every street, every school, every hospital and everywhere else. Would we ask for your blessings upon this gathering tonight? That our discussion may be filled with respect, understanding and compassion for one another. That us hear your voice above all voices and make decisions that align with your will. Because we know that you are the fountain of all goodness and blessings. You bring this wonderful town called Biddle from strength to strength, reaching its full blossom. In the holy and awesome name of Jesus, we pray. Amen.
Thank you very much, Sean. Please be safe to everybody.
Thank you. Well, and welcome everybody. Just a little bit of housekeeping. Obviously, everybody will be aware that I'm in the central chair today. You will know that our mayor, councillor, Ken Harper is actually quite poorly at the moment. We wish him a speedy recovery. There is a card doing the round, so if everybody can make sure they get their signatures and wishes on that, then that will be absolutely fine. So if we can go straight into the meeting, the first thing which I want to say is that I'd like to confirm that all attendees will be named in the minutes unless otherwise instructed. And for anybody who is viewing this meeting on YouTube, the meeting has been recorded and will be uploaded to the Biddle Town Council YouTube page. The aim is that the decision making should be transparent and in the public domain, which will involve more of our community and local democracy. Being in this council chamber, you are consenting to being recorded and your image to be added to YouTube. The images and sound may well be used for training purposes. Any views expressed are the speaker's own and do not necessarily reflect the view of Biddle Town Council. Please view the guidance on recording and public meetings policy if you need more information. Thank you. If we can just go into the meeting, you've got your agenda in front of you. Section started, section thirty five, public participation, and we have a presentation on ANPR. Staff, please, if you could just introduce yourself if you don't mind for the audience.
Josh, I'm going to be so full of Biddle Brownies. What would it be different to normal? No, I can give you the facts and figures and all that kind of stuff. Been asked to pop down and do this presentation this week as there's only going into the moorlands, both cameras, as we identify the central lack of cameras in certain areas. And it would be in Biddle, Brownies and Bleak, and that would all going to be local to itself. And there is a little survey thing at the end, just to ask not only if you understand what I've told you today, but if you've got any opinions as councillors or members of the public, where you're thinking a camera would work, why? I think Sarah's going to send that out to all you guys afterwards, just in case you've got a view that can try and look at when future cameras be put in place. It's a little healthy. And so so ANPR ultimate point recognition issues, I've run the last app for all my costs and police force through the UK, it's to be able to identify vehicles whilst on the road, whether they are no tax, no insurance, into MRT or whether they've got any kind of mark on them relating to drug penalties. Could that be anything, any kind of ground they put a mark on vehicle, we'll give this main model registration when it was registered. And that's number, it'll give us everything. So how it works, I'm guessing, I'm sure you probably already know what just, and we have cameras situated out in locality. They are, location are secret, so we don't give them away to the public to prevent people avoiding them. Should they be going out, connect or not, they will not be trying to be identified by ourselves. Images captured, takes full image of the car and clean registration, make, model, colour, to make sure it all matches up with the registration, front and back and image of the drive. If it's taken from the front, so we can identify who's driving the vehicle, thank you for that. So is that looked at or less, from what I'd say, quite to the GDPR? So if I identify a vehicle that we've got an interest in, we'll then go and check the ANPR system. See if they fit the cameras, not like a monitor twenty or so, to make sure people are doing what I'm doing. But if a market does ping up on a car, then we'll get notified, or if we're looking for a car, then we'll go on the system and search for it in that way. And we are audited by independent parties to make sure we are using the data correctly, storing it correctly, not using it. So versus if we should be using it for all, not storing it for too long, then that's all like impossible. I've been, and now we're good. Yeah, so camera locations are done by test. And so we'll see the amount of traffic that's used on those roads. It's the main links in and out of locations, like the main road, like say for instance, the Tonsley Road now towards that from the middle, that's the main road. Out into the city, that'd be like more of an ideal location than say top road and middle more, because it's not really more main traffic. And also assessed by, people have to go out of the location to make sure they're going to be a suitable facilities to connect them up to our systems or all that kind of stuff, but mainly these make sure for our roads, we're putting them on. Yeah, so ANPR coming in the next access by certain officers, if they're specific trainings used to stood. And again, if to follow certain regulations, while I think you're connecting, that's like localised or that can be national or depending on the road. I'll say from that angle. Yeah, that's, that's, that's things what's said about what I was saying you were up for. So we regularly consult members of the public, right, where they want cameras, if they're going to be effective, et cetera, et cetera. So when that comes around afterwards, and it's mostly about to cross what we're going, direct to Cameron Cook and Mark Bowler, who are the inspector and chief inspector, commanders for the moorlands. Then they'll then take all the information for yourselves, and if any members of the public would like it, on YouTube and so send an email to them, and then we can use your, you guys the rest wants the information, because you're going quite locally, you're all over the area, we can use that. Thank you for the overboard of the presentation. Yeah, so this is, these will be all beyond questions on the sheets later. So wondering how to, Jerry works, what's your opinion on using ANPR? Do you agree or disagree without using on our roads, what do you think of our benefits in our community? Do you have someone, please, on captain? Yeah, thank you. Right.
Yeah, no problem. Just one comment before we start, obviously, any suggestions on where we think we potentially should have an ANPR camera? Then direct them through the appropriate channels or through Sarah, because obviously we don't want to potentially publicise where it'd be. Just one, just one commenter for me, Deputy Mayor's property, you showed an average speed camera there, which obviously, is that doubling up as ANPR?
I do not know.
I was going to say, because is there a provision?
I didn't think they would put that in, because I'd actually like to show you what an ANPR camera looks like. That's my guess.
I was going to say, ANPR cameras are financed by the, by the police service, it's a police service thing, yes. And average speed cameras, are they financed by the police or are they financed by county? Average speed cameras.
Good question. Turns where they're located, I think.
Hmm, hmm.
I don't think it's going to be.
I won't remember. If you could double up, there's actually a perfect location in Biddle, we'll discuss that. Right, okay, I've got councillor Rogers.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Just very quickly, without disclosing information, I'm right thinking there's only one static ANPR camera in the Biddle Valley at the moment.
All right.
There's more than one. Okay, okay. That's what I wanted to know. I know, I've never to one, to be fair. Yes. Thank you.
We will be getting more.
Right, yeah.
Councillor Hart.
Yeah, thank you. Can the software in the system, can it pick out when somebody's carrying the wrong registration plate?
As in like the spacing or?
No, as in
The original vehicle.
There's a truck travelling through Biddle and it's got a Range Rovers plates on it.
Yes, that'd come on, because it pinged up. What I don't know, like, so that pinged up as the Range Rover and then we looked at the picture and say, that's not a Range Rover, that's a truck, if you know what I mean.
Right, that's very interesting.
So cameras and image for me to, thanks.
Yeah, because there's one or two people about who seem to think that swapping the plates on their vehicles is the thing to do. Assuming they've got any insurance doors.
Councillor Jones.
Thank you, Mr Deputy Mayor. I will obviously pull in the form, but just a couple of things that sprung to mind from what you said, Josh. Not used for using mobile devices, I would ask why not? Because I think that's one of the worst offences, having been to a few instances where crashes have been caused by people with mobile phones. They are lethal and I think that probably should be looked at. And he said not on top road, again, why not? That's the main arch between Bleak and Biddle. It's a busy road, I would thought that did well. And I'm just wondering how all this is going to help stop that blue radio, it's steaming past my gate at sixty mile an hour red level in Biddlemore, because it isn't.
I'm not overly afraid of how the assessment process goes, I'm not thinking. But I'm guessing the top road, a lot of the land that would be going, where the cameras would be going, because they're going inside, will be private, not council land, so I don't know. The legalities and difficulties around getting the cameras put in. And and again, with mobile phones, they have, I think it's down there. And you've started rolling out mobile phones, specific ones, mobile phones, just to catch people on mobile phones, roll around the motorways, they've got mobile, so it's a van, it's got a camera in the top, goes to park it up, stick it up and it'll capture people on the phones, but I bet they're just trying that out down there at the minute.
I wasn't expecting answers, but just. As usual, just.
Okay, Councillor Hawley.
Thank you. Yeah, just, just a couple of questions. Is it actually recognising the number plate of the cars approaching it? Or can it also pick up the ones going away from it?
Um. It works.
Think you do work, right?
So sometimes we get the image of coming more my, maybe it'll tell us which way they're going as well, so on a specific grid, so down the high street, if there were people on there, it tells us which direction. So and you'd get the front or the back image as well.
The other question I've got is if you do decide to put these up, but if you're more, and when we were looking at speed cameras, it was always a case, oh, there's nowhere to put speed cameras because the roads aren't like. So how are you going to put one of these up?
Yeah, that's, that's, that's what I mean, yeah, it's all that's the assessment, like.
So really, I mean, it's something that needs looked at and potentially Biddlemore should have them as, same as anyone else.
Yeah, there is something wrong there. I don't even know what the locations are. I've just been told that near Biddle, near Brownies, no, that's all happened since. I don't even care.
Okay. Councillor Jackson.
Thank you, Mr Deputy Mayor. We have had in the past, and some of it's going back a little, a few, a few years, is really bad fly tipping incidents. And obviously, I think the professional fly tippers are not necessarily using a proper, a proper number plate that's to the vehicle, obviously, because it, and they also know where these, these cameras are. So they tend to use roads that avoid them anyway. So that's, that's what, that's just one, it's just an observation. But could I just bring up slightly away from what we're talking about as well, before I'm on my feet? I'm going to call this PPM and it's police phone numbers. We've been after them for, I don't know how long. It looks like now we may have a more settled force, hopefully. Could I request that we have these numbers? I do have sort of one, but if that person's got on duty, you know, if we've got all of the numbers, we should be able to get hold of, you know, one of them at some point. So could we please have those numbers? Thank you.
Anybody else? Councillor Smith.
Thank you for coming in doing the presentation. Are you there in your usual capacity to shoot questions about?
Yeah.
And so just looking at crime statistics for, I noticed August have gone up on crime maps now and they've shown quite a downturn in the numbers from July. Is there a particular crime type that you've, you've seen quite significant downturn in recently?
Um. From personal experience, I'd say, that's my experience, and I'd say why this has gone down. We've had increases in other areas, which are not going down. And vehicles being taken, but there's been a trend across to the hollows, not accounts for that. People have been pressed in doubt with that since. And people fact that, which has gone up. And it's, that's probably leaning more towards the time of the year as well, that's drawing in. And that's when you tend to get more of your thefts, criminal damage, and things that do occur usually under the cover of darkness, where you can't be seen on CCTV, because clearly, especially where at some point you might have stayed and identified. And and I can understand if you, we may see an increase in that too, when it starts to get cold and wet and it starts to go towards the shaft that's across the road and on the car block. But at the minute, I'd say and from that, was.
Come back.
Yes.
And yeah, just as a follow up to that, I know we discussed in the children's working group about, you know, your preference for locations for cameras and things. Are we kind of making waves on looking at?
Yeah, we have spoken to chaplain about potentially getting some access down here, so we can use existing cameras in the way that we like to use them, to be able to monitor our locations. And we haven't got anything back on whether you can get the one that we can get to the council yet.
Yeah.
But I'll send an email or whatever, when I've got some more.
Just a point of information, the chief officer's got an update on that very issue.
And you probably don't know this yet, so I'm going to explain, I'm going with the new sergeant, so I've spoken to him about contact details. So we can get those through, so that's why I had a meeting last week, I think. So Cowan and I, Roger McDonald, are going to see the Stoke provision next Friday. So we're going to go and see what they can do in terms of mobile CCTV, and whether that's something that can be used in Biddle.
All right, Josh, thank you very much and thank you very much for your presentation.
Thanks very much.
Okay, lovely. If we can move on to the next, the next part is Staffordshire County Council, council representatives and councillor Keith Fund that can go first. Now, we have had a councillor surgery from five o'clock, so hopefully a lot of the the specific needs, mental niggly bits have been discussed, but over to you, Keith, the floor is yours.
Okay. So firstly, just go through things that have been happening since the last meeting. We've had some more health committee meetings, et cetera. We were talking about the upgrade of help at home, which is on the statutory connecting. It's meant to help people find access to the best suppliers of things like wheelchairs or anything else that might need them, or left handies, bottle openers, all this sort of stuff, that people might need to keep themselves at home and healthy and fit. So rather than go on about it too much now, I was thinking that perhaps it might be worth, and depending on what you guys think, I'm suggesting elsewhere as well, as I'm working on a demonstration event, so the people could then come along and actually go onto the website and see how it all works. I think that would be something that would help those people, taking carers, if there are any carers within the community that need to do that, or people themselves that want to do that. So if someone could feedback, perhaps through Sarah, if you want to try and organise that, I'd be happy to do that jointly and combined with whoever wants to work with us on that one. I'm not going to talk about the Western Service, I'll leave John to do that, I think he's quite able to do that one. The only other thing that has come up, I don't know whether some of you saw it, that's something that we are going to be dealing with, I'm going to try and ask Gerry Thursday. The data that we were having from Wally's Quarry, I don't know whether you hear about that, it's a famous quarry, it covers, it always seems to be on national news and regional news. The data for the Hajar South folks, in fact, I questioned during a meeting recently, and the answer is all completely wrong. And the Environment Agency, the Red Vivi experts, seem to have got this out by factors of, I don't know how many factors it is, but we'll find out soon. So I will try and bring that back to you just as an interest, because several things that have been going on in the background, both district and county and everything else. The Environment Agency, the people that are meant to be, those people that are meant to be, you know, wielding a stick and keeping people within control and stopping legal burning and dumping and all that stuff. And you can see what we're dealing with, if this is a case in question, if the whole data of our country's been wrong for those how many years, then good help us basically. Anyway, so I just thought I'd bring that one up. We've been asked also about audit and account, so yeah, just to let you know that we are still behind. We have had a very poor attendance, remember, I must say, at East Stafford. And they are still trying to complete the twenty twenty one audit, they are not, so it's still two and a half, three years behind. They have a programme now to get it hopefully mostly sorted before they start on next year's accounts. But as I say, this has come about because of national issues, not for anything that's been done, you know, inadvertently, because of what we've been hearing, what's been happening in Birmingham, Stoke and all these other places. I want to try and keep people assured that there's no such issues in stat shit, to my knowledge on the audit and committee of that, of that particular authority. We had a presentation, which is the other side of things, to do with, and this is to do with data transfer, it's about data today, but never mind. And I don't know whether you've heard of it, but it's called Gigafast. Gigafast. No, okay, they've done a really good PR job on this then, haven't they? But basically, the government have decided that super fast is, is no longer super. And what we need is gigafast. And super fast was at twenty, twenty four, I think it's mega, mega bits per second. I've got that right, so if anyone's out there that knows about this, Gigafast is a thousand. So it's, it's multiple times faster for the future. And at the moment, they are around thirty, forty percent, but as a result of this, and this is the bit I'm trying to get to a boat in rural areas, is that some polls are going up in some communities. I've had a bit of a running in my parish area. And the polls are being put up without consultation, so please keep your eyes and ears open for that. I hope it won't happen around here. Some providers are doing better than others and it's, they are coming to the parish council meeting to try and sort things out. But this is the reason why, is that they're trying to deliver this Gigafast within a certain time period while the funding is there. The moorlands as well, as I found out, has actually had a contract that she's based over towards Derbyshire by another supplier. And they've managed to fund over two thirds of the moorlands, particularly the northern rural area, which is very good news. So there should be a lot of interest there. So please keep your eyes and ears open and just to, for everyone, you should be getting much better fibre connection, hopefully for better communications and better business and everything else in the future. So I just thought I'd let you know that one. Nigel will probably go on about climate change, I'll leave that one to him and the working group we've had there. DHP meeting, I had one last week. I did bring up Park Lane and how disappointed I was that they hadn't done the dressing on the top of the Park Lane up towards the rock. They've assured me that it's on the list, a bit like some other areas, I know there's some areas in Nigel's as well, so hopefully we will get it done. But the season's closing quite rapidly now. And judging by if there's so many areas not, not been done, I don't see how they're going to be doing at all at that time. With regard to the drop curve by the Squirrel Hay School for the access for the parents in particular, for the two children going there. I've asked the game for them to be quicker than they have been, about giving me a quote for that and to whether or not we can work across myself towards the schools, because there's two more drop curves that need to be up by the school gate to allow access. Not just, not just for her, but for anyone that might be disabled or have any disabled issues. So I'm still working on that one. In terms of the Biddle working group, what I've asked for there at the same DHP meeting was that they were very reluctant to allow me to go and talk to an engineer. Now, a few years ago, I would have been happy to have gone up to the offices, talked to the AMI or on the second floor of SP one or SP two, I can't remember which one they're in now, but anyway, in Stafford, and I got on chin wag with them and sorted something out, but apparently they don't, not allow me to do that now. And they might be able to get a thirty second, a thirty minute meeting with them, whether it's through Teams or some other format. So I will be trying to do that, and that's to discuss all the issues that we've had with the working group and some of you have come to that meeting. So thank you, those that attended that meeting, and hopefully we'll keep that group going for a little bit more. And thank you, Nigel, for attending that one. I'll leave it there. Questions and disappear.
Councillor, Councillor Smith.
Yeah, just to let you know that the speed, it's not a speed camera, but the, on Park Lane, as you're coming down Park Lane, there's a sign that flashes up that says thirty if you're going to speed on it. It's not been working for about a week. I meant to send you an email, but I've not had my iPad.
Oh, sorry, I just wanted to, sorry, because that came up earlier about the speed question you asked me in the open session. There's a difference between monitoring, which is what you're on about, their advisory sort of notices and things like that. There's ones that don't record who you are, there's ones that do record who you are, the SIDS of this world, which have, I've just learnt at the meeting, at the DHP meeting, is now it's down to town councils and parish councils that proceed with those. And the county council may help support, fund those that might find that a bit difficult to do. So that's, that's news to me in the last month. So if you do want to put some SIDS up somewhere around the town, which wanted to speed and keep things going, they work very well with the Speed Watch team. And I know there's a group of you that want to get some Speed Watch people going, because I know some of you came for training and things like that a few, few years back. Then that would be great, that would, those two things fit together really well. But there's one other type of speed monitor at the moment, which is what myself and Nigel can do. You don't see them, they're boxes that are put in at the side of the road, they're electronic boxes. And they, they do manage to monitor the speed, a bit like the A and D R, but they, they don't record it, they just record the average speed of cameras coming through. Now, that is something which we can request through our DHP, but the cost of doing those in any location is going up and up and up. So that's, that's the answer to your question, which is why I gave you such a vague answer, there's three or four different types of speed, camera speed monitor. Thank you.
Okay, excellent.
So is that, we'll look at that.
Yes, if you, if you can just send me an email, I always pass it straight on to the team. Yeah, thank you. I'll put it down as a note. Yeah.
All right, lovely. Thank you, Keith.
Okay. Nothing else?
No, we seem to be clear.
Thank you. Just.
Good. It does appear to be actually, yes, very good. Just a few updates from me. Please report that the Biddle Valley Way is now being put on to the county routine maintenance schedule, so that they will be doing threshold mowing of the verges on a regular basis. And they are also treating the Japanese knotweed, which we've got, we've had quite an infestation down there. And that's had its first stage of treatment and it has gone a little bit yellow. I just thought it was autumn, so reported and said, why haven't you done it anyway? It turns out they It turns out they have, so that's their two positive things, so it's opened up quite nicely. I don't know if you're aware, but in October, this, early this month, there have been notified changes and second set of changes to the way that DIY waste is managed at household waste and recycling centres, which we've got Ben Mersley. If you look it up on the county website, it's a little bit complicated, but what it effectively allows now is that any DIY waste like rubble and stones and various bits of detritus, which were chargeable up until this change, as long as you go with reasonably small DIY amounts, then it's not a chargeable incident. It's effectively classed as two medium sized bags, but it is quite complicated, there's quite a lot of lists, quite a long list and there's quite a few exemptions. The other thing which I did notice on that, and I think it's an issue which affects Biddlefin Bloom, is that Town and Parish Council green waste doesn't need a permit and can visit and tip while recycle as often as they like, that's what it says on the site. Now, I think we perhaps need to have a look at the dispensation for Biddlefin Bloom, because I do know they go up there quite regularly, so that's been done as it, so that's actually covered, so we're done on that, so that's good. And the final thing, the only comment which we will, well, two things actually. One is that we did have a meeting this morning about, with the county buzz procurement team. And I think it was a very positive meeting, it was attended by one councillor out of each ward, just by chance as much as anything. But it gave a complete spread and I think there was quite a lot of commonality, so hopefully we'll have something positive coming from that. It's too early to report the detail on that, but let's, let's hope we're pushing in the right direction. And the final thing is that the county have just produced their adaptation strategy for climate change. There's two aspects of climate change, one is that aim towards carbon neutrality, the other one is being able to safeguard our communities with the effects of climate change being apparent, whether that's flash flooding, drought or whatever. So there is an adaptive adaptation strategy which has now been approved by Cabinet. So hopefully we'll see some funding, we'll see some actions from that because I'm sure councillor Flunder would agree, we're starting to get quite a number of people who've got drives who were saying, we're getting surface water flood and it never used to happen. Well, that's one of the things where we've got to, got to be very focused on that. Councillor Salt.
Thank you. While we're talking about buses and for the public record, and I was at work, so I couldn't attend the bus meeting. But have we got an update on the number nine? Because I know you said you were going to look into it, because there's lots of young people aged between sixteen and seventeen that can't get on the number nine bus in the morning to get to Newcastle and Stoke Six Form because it's full. So I was just wondering if you'd discuss that and if we had an update for us.
Yes, yes, we have discussed it, there are more than one buzz, there's more than a seven thirty buzz, there's a seven o'clock buzz. It is a difficult, we can't resolve it by putting an alternative sized buzz on because of the way the buzz is scheduled to go around certain parts of Newcastle, which are unsuitable for a larger buzz. But what we're going to do is going to do some, in the short term, do some promotional work to actually promote and advertise the different schedules for the buzz so that as students get used to their timetables and sort of settle down and when they, when they do need to attend, because it is a little bit staggered, we can perhaps spread the load out a little bit, but it is something which they are aware of, both from an operational point of view and I think also from a comms point of view as well, so. Come back.
It might be a really good idea to go and speak to this year's year elevens, to tell them all about the buses when they're in the last few weeks of training, rooms make their transition to the sixth form, because I think what's happened is, is they've left school, they knew nothing about buses, they haven't had a practice, they've all rocked up together and attempted to get a bus. So maybe if this happens at the end of year eleven by county councillors going into school, speaking to year eleven, we might iron out some of those issues before they happen.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Point. Councillor Ward.
Yeah, thank you, Deputy Mayor, complete separate issue, Biddlefaly Way. At the top of Biddlefaly Way, as you're coming towards Newpool Road, where the trees overhang on to Biddlefaly Way. Talking about this now because what you've just said about the maintenance coming from the county, they've agreed that. It does get really like a load of mud. When the leaves have come off the trees last year, they've gone into a mulch. And because it's covered by the trees, it never really dries out and it's constantly like a mud as you're walking through it. Now, it needs the leaves certainly from last year before the autumn comes and the leaves start dropping again. They need, I think, to get off the path itself. So I don't know if you can put that on the list for the maintenance of that. Because it is, if you walk down there, your shoes, honestly, it comes over the top of your shoes, it's that bag where all the leaves are dropped. So if we can put that on the worklist, that much appreciated.
I absolutely agree, it also affects really badly underneath Maulein Roadbridge and slightly up from that, which is, which is a very similar position. It was something, well, it is something which I'm going to raise tomorrow, because tomorrow we've got a West Ward councillors' meeting and obviously the Biddlefaly Way is predominantly West Ward. And it is an issue, I think, I am pushing the county and we've got a sort of tacit, one step at a time approach from them. We've gone from now a walk through annual inspection in January to a proper mowing and treatment cycle. And they also are committed to looking at the overhanging trees as well, because we do have some, some issues with overhanging trees. So yeah, that's something very, very much aware of, including the replacement of some steps as well. Predominantly, we'll talk about it tomorrow as well, yeah. Any other points before we move on? Okay, excellent, right, thank you very much. If we can go on to item thirty-six, which is apologies.
Yeah, we perceived apologies from councillor Carver, Rushton, Clady, Redford.
Now, item number thirty-seven on the agenda, declarations of interest, to declare any discloseable pecuniary interests and dispensations. Councillor Rogers.
Exactly, Deputy Mayor, on the supplementary accounts, I have one of the six councillors who are giving a little bit of money to the children's under-elevens football team, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Councillor Proudleth.
Okay, Mr Deputy Mayor, can I declare an interest in item forty-five, please?
Yes. Don't we come?
Yeah. That's not in.
With Wayne, I'm one of the contributors.
Okay, that's fine, that's absolutely fine, we're good. To declare any other disclosable interests, councillor Harp.
Yes, thank you, Mr Deputy Mayor, I am a member of Moors Partnership, so I will not be voting on item forty-eight.
Hey, thank you. If we can go through the minutes which we've got to approve and sign. Part A is the minutes of the town council meeting, which was held on Tuesday the twelfth of September at six PM. Now, if we can go through, is any items? Twenty-one, public participation. Twenty-two, apologies. Twenty-three, declarations of interest. Twenty-four, minutes. Twenty-five, mayor's communications. Twenty-six, standing agenda items. Twenty-seven, to receive an update on outside body meetings attended and body meetings attended in the past month. Twenty-eight, to confirm that the town council has received a Rosper Silver Award. Twenty-nine, item requested by councillor Harper to consider purchasing a collar for the mayoral chain. Thirty, to note the current consultation period in relation to the neighbourhood plan and the neighbourhood development order and receive an update on the next steps. Thirty-one, accounts and finance expenditure between five hundred and five thousand. Expenditure less than five hundred. Going on to confidential items to approve potential management arrangements in relation to Bellway land at Greyswood stroke Halls Road. Thirty-three, to receive an update in relation to ongoing discussions regarding the community ownership fund and to agree actions during September and October. And thirty-four, to confirm that the chief officer should continue discussions with Staffordshire Malles District Council in relation to a twenty-five year lease on the visitor centre. Right, and we sign those off as an accurate. With my councillor Hart, secondly by councillor Jones.
Yeah.
Eight eighty-eight, be on the minutes, to receive the minutes of the recreation and community. So we have.
Like to move those, please, Mr Deputy Mayor.
Okay, you don't need me to go through them, you're happy, is everybody happy? Councillor Hawley, I will go through them then if you've got something.
Reason I'm sort of standing, basically, you've got me down as an apology, I'm not actually on that. I think you've probably taken the, apologised for the town council.
I am, I am a trainee, I'm the chief officer, told me to go, suggested I go through them, so I'll go through them. So present and we note what was said, in attendance, apologies, declarations of interest, previous minutes, to receive a presentation on burial data for twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three. Item requested by councillor Holswood, discussion about Halls Road Recreation Ground. Item requested by councillor Hart to consider the future use of his hub. To receive an update on Naxley Highways Works Group Meeting. To note that a grant has been received from district council towards lencmen's activities. Jobs for the lencmen, which is a standard, standard agenda item. And confidential items was to consider land opportunities within the town. Any issues to raise there, can I sign those as a true and accurate record?
Move it, Chair.
Goodbye councillor Hart, secondly, councillor Jones. So thirty-eight C, looking at the minutes of the planning committee, which was held on Tuesday the nineteenth of September, twenty twenty-three. Present, in attendance, apologies, declarations of interest, minutes, standard agenda item to consider any proposed sites for local listings, new planning applications, to consider supplementary applications received since the agenda was created. New decisions and notices received from the district council and appeals. Can we have a proposal?
With those minutes, councillor Hawley, and seconded by councillor Garvey.
Thank you.
Next, one thirty-eight B, to receive the minutes of the town and community committee meeting held on Tuesday the nineteenth of September, twenty twenty-three. Present, in attendance, apologies, declarations of interest, minutes, to receive an update on heritage restoration projects. To consider Biddlef works together priorities ahead of the meeting on Wednesday the twenty-second of September. To consider shared prosperity fund applications and allocations, there was an overview attached and agree the next steps. To receive an update on the Biddlef calendar two thousand and twenty-four and to agree associated costs. And on the confidential items, to receive a report on station road fountains. Can I have a proposal for that? Councillor Smith proposes, can I have a second please? Councillor Salt to second that. And finally, on item thirty-eight, minutes, is to approve and sign the minutes of the finance strategy meeting committee held on.
And it's been, Mr Deputy Mayor, please.
Thank you. Councillor Rogers on Tuesday the twenty-sixth. So if we go through, present, in attendance, apologies, declarations of interest, minutes, accounts matters, to receive an update on receipts and payments, to receive a verbal update on the application to Unity Bank, to approve an internal control report completed by councillor Hawley and to approve an external audit report and recommendations. Confirm that the town council will support the thirty year anniversary of the reforming of the Biddlef branch of the Royal British Legion. To consider the future maintenance of the mayoral chain, item referred from town council. To consider monitoring information for Biddletown for reception services. To approve the following policies, child invulnerable adult policy, disciplinary ingravence policy, flexible working policy, general privacy notice for staff councillors and role holders policy and the review of the general privacy notice for members of the public. To approve and review the partnerships protocol, to approve the reviewed publication scheme and guidance. Forty-nine, standing items, to consider disposal of any assets in line with the asset management policy and financial regulations. To confirm approved supplies as part of the strategy. Confidential items, we discussed issues around Christmas events, the UK Share Prosperity Fund and glasses and eyesight testing staff. We also had a discussion, item fifty-three, on the miners' lamps and receivers of quotations were tabled. Okay, before we move on, councillor Salt.
Recorded as attending, but I was actually absent, I would give me apologies because it was Sunday the thirtieth day.
Okay, otherwise those are okay, we, have a second please? All right, thank you. Mayor's Communications or Deputy Mayor's Communications in this instance, I did put, we've got the card going around, I do want to recall that, you know, wish Kenny well and wish him speedy recall for me. It's the most important thing, the sooner I have, I'm sitting back here, the better. There's a couple of things which is coming up, quite an exciting development for the town, because we've missed one for a long time. As on Saturday at nine AM, there was a pet shop opening in King Street. So I don't know if you're available, John? Yeah, I'll be there, John, will you be there? Possibly. That's, that's happening, yes, so from an events point of view, that's happening at Saturday at nine o'clock, Saturday's a buzzing time and councillor Hart.
Yes, thank you, Mr Deputy Mayor, I do believe that the gentleman concerned has come from outside Biddlef and his wife. They are investing in Biddlef in a new retail venture. And I hope that as many people as possible can support them to give them that encouragement for that investment. So it's commendable what they've done, they want, they wanted to come to Biddlef, they thought it was worthwhile.
Well said, thank you very much, yes, appreciate it, thank you. And the second thing is, is on Saturday the twenty-first, the following Saturday, two PM till five PM is an event to celebrate the thirtieth anniversary of the restarting, the restarting, I'm not sure, of the Royal British Legion's branch in Biddlef, which is obviously very close to councillor Salt's heart. Everybody will be welcome, it'll be hopefully quite an entertaining event, are you there, John?
Who was it?
There's John, very good. And refreshments will be served and I've, I've ordered some late autumn sunshine, so hopefully everything will go quite well and quite nice. So yeah, so I hope that's very well attended, very, very laudable then. And that's, I think that's for me, anything else to, do you think?
We're just having a look at the moment at whether or not we should cancel the mayor's eat quiz night. It seems unlikely at the moment that it's going to be well enough to host that, so we might have to postpone that. So if you had, put that in your calendars, just keep an eye open for an email, just to confirm one way or the other.
Councillor Rogers.
I see what you're saying, Chief Officer, but I think we should leave that down to the mayor himself to make that decision.
Do it for him, I'm waiting for him to tell me if he wants to do it.
Right, okay, yeah, yeah.
You should remind him of that.
Because it might say, can you go ahead without him, so I'm thinking possibly, I don't know. Just a thought.
Okay.
Yeah.
So moving on, item forty, standard agenda items. Councillors to note that these are existing standard, standing agenda items and can be amended by resolution if required. So the first one is to receive an update on the management of town council assets, Chief Officer.
Thank you, I have a lot to update you on with regards to this. We would, well, previously we've had an asset management working group, which hasn't met for a little while. But I wonder how you would feel about having a meeting of that group, we'd like to go through. We'd like to go through the terms and conditions for booking the town hall. Was quite a big party. The other night, which has given us some lessons learned, but obviously we want to kind of chew those over in an environment that isn't. You know, where there can be more debate. So I don't know how you feel about having that group because that group kind of fed directly into, into this group. Into the town council. Whether anybody wants to sit on that working group, whether you would.
Could it fit as an agenda, is it, is it a detail meeting? Would it go on for quite a while? Or otherwise would it fit on town and community?
Town and community doesn't manage the assets really. It could go on finance. Finance is already quite a big meeting.
It's a big meeting, isn't it? Yes, yes.
I don't mind either way. I mean, that's, that's what's brewing with us at the moment. We'd like the opportunity to discuss some of those proposed amendments with you, which is a slight change of, of direction.
How do we pose that? Sorry, councillor.
Sorry, I'll volunteer.
So if councillor Jackson could probably get together with councillor Hart, councillor Rogers and. Decide on whether you want to work in group and we put a working group together. You can invite a friend if you like, you know.
Councillor Jackson buys the beer.
I think in principle it's.
No problem.
Yeah, that's all you can. Yeah. Some old saying, if they get it done.
He won't speak tomorrow morning, he won't.
Councillor Salt.
Just let us all know when that meeting's going to be and then if I can make it, I'll come, but if can't, I'll.
Yeah, we'll, we'll circulate it to everybody and then it should be, it'll be fine. Councillor Smith.
Yeah, just to, I know I ask it every single meeting, but how, whether we're getting traction on business centre.
We have got, there, there's been a change of personnel. Every time there's change of personnel, there is a slight hiatus, no matter how well it's handed over. But we have got the new head of assets coming over to Biddelf next Thursday, I think it is, on the seventeenth, that's, that's a Thursday, Tuesday. She's looking at a couple of specific issues which we've got, but as always, if I get a, if I get a senior officer from Staffordshire Malins. I always invite to meet them here and that gives the opportunity for an introduction with the chief officer. And also to raise any other things. And I have already raised it. We, we, we push it against an open door. It's just a case of getting it over the line. So I don't see an issue with that now. Okay. Councillor Jones.
I've been hearing what councillor Smith said. Is that about the visitors there?
It's to send to. Yes.
Thank you. Can I be present at that, possibly, please?
Not really a discussion about at least, but you can be present if you like. Next Tuesday morning at ten o'clock, isn't it?
Yeah, definitely.
We, we come in here to say hello and then we're going on site. So this is the plan. Bring it over, yes. Not that side, we're not going down there, going somewhere else. Nothing to do. There's not really anything to do with that, but that is one of the things which is.
All right.
Which is a worry in my mind. Yeah, too, too hard afterwards. It's, it's, yeah, you're overthinking this, I think. To receive an update on health and safety activities, including risk management.
Thank you. We haven't had any. Formal meetings. We continue to, to review our processes and practices. Been quite a lot of action as regards to events and how we risk assess those. So we've done a piece of work on that recently. And there were quite a number of quotes that were approved at the last finance committee for various bits of work around this building and others, so they are in progress.
Looking around, we'll move on. Item C is to receive an update on the Biddelf Works Together project. Again, an update from the chief officer.
Yeah, that's fine. So we had a bit of works together meeting on the twenty-seventh of September. And that was really positive. Most of the partners around agree, agree that they'd like to do something similar to what they did last year. And. And so they're just kind of working up costs for me with regards to that. So that's about providing places where people can meet and have something to eat. In a warm space throughout the winter months. And we've already established a budget for that through our finance strategy management committee. We have commenced the rollout of some of our slow cookers. And we can pretty much build a wall with slow cookers in this building. So some of those gone out to the food bank to distribute from our behalf. To people who haven't helped them by other, other means. And I've got a meeting with a public health team at the county council with regards to this enabling type role that we've talked about before. So hopefully we can get some.
Okay. Councillor Ward.
Deputy Mayor, just a brief one there. The new community fund should be available in the next two weeks. And the criteria is that it helps people in the local area, primarily cost of living crisis and stuff like that. But I, I think Biddelf Works Together as a constituted group can apply to that funding. And part of it is match funding, but the, the match funding can be in volunteers' time. So, so that really there would be no capital cost coming from the groups itself. That would be the volunteers' time. And I, I certainly think that's something the, the Biddelf Works Together group could apply for because that would then help with the looking at facilities and hiring. Rooms and buildings.
Thank you. Councillor Jackson.
Two things, just following on from what, what Chris said. Would it be the individual groups that are in Biddelf Works Together or would it be? The town hall facilitating or the town council facilitating that? Because we've been sort of told in the past. That as a town council, we were ineligible for sort of stuff, but the individual groups could. And I think that's, that, that's really, that, that is something that we perhaps, that if that is still the case. It needs changing a little bit because the town council can certainly facilitate and distribute on behalf of the district council. And then just secondly, on, on the slow cookers, who's actually sort of running this? No, they were a long, they were a long, long time. It was, and Gail Edwards, I think, got the original money together to get them. And but who's actually, who's sort of in charge of distributing them? I heard what you said about going out to food banks. And but. Looking at how many we've got. You're going to be here for some, some while. It's not a real sort of concerted push or a information campaign saying we've got them. And, you know, these are the criteria that you need if, if you want one or whatever it might be. It just seems like. We need to move a few, as Del boy said.
We've, if at my.
Yeah, absolutely.
We've been allocated those that we asked for because we are a community help point within the county's structure. And the letter that we have to give out with them said that they've been recommended. The person has been recommended to the county council. And that it's a gift from the county council as part of the Department of Work and Pensions Energy Efficiency Campaign. So I guess that's where the funding has come from. And then for each person that we or the food bank or other partners give them to, there is a, like a spreadsheet. Which we then have to send to, I think it's Slow Cooker Project Act, Staffordshire, something like that. So we have to advise the county who we've given them to. We have to ask. Appropriate questions to ensure that they haven't already had one allocated through a different means. And we have put together a, like a booklet, which is. And it's got some of the recipes that the Green Tree House had before and then some other kind of money saving tips as well. So we printed a few of those off to give out. For people who get them as well, just with some topics.
If I'm agreeing, councillor Salt, then I think you answer one of my questions because I was wondering whether. Larger slow cookers, because you've got two sizes, I mean. Whether they could be supplied to some of the facilities who, you know, and groups who do cooking and have got kitchen facilities. But I think if you've got to record down the spreadsheet and justify why you're doing it, you couldn't say, you couldn't give a slow cooker to a community group. Because I do, without naming them, I do know a couple of community groups who, who do things which would benefit from putting. You know, a lunchtime stew on, so to speak, or whatever, or lobby or something like that. I don't know if there's any, any scope for that, but that's just something to.
I don't think we can use those, but I don't think there's anything stopping us as a town council saying to.
Yeah, well, they wanted to commit to kitchen. Well, if you wanted equipment for a kitchen to provide a better, say, big deal. Councillor Salt.
Yeah, a couple of things. So Biddelf Works Together isn't a constituted group. And so that's something, we've spoken about this at length, and that's something that I do still think we need to go down that path because I think it'll open a lot more doors. And some of the people that are already volunteers sat around that table being in volunteer roles for the Biddelf Works Together group. So for example. Secretary, you know, the usual kind of trustee type members, chairperson. So if, if it's still going to be a constituted group, then we, we've got to go down that road as Biddelf Works Together, but that's an aside issue. Secondly, so a bit like what is currently the gas and electricity scheme. If we as town councillors come across a family or a person that needs a slow cooker or we think would benefit in our capacity. As people that might go out and know, community members, can we refer them to the town hall to have a discussion about this? Thank you.
I'll. Councillor Ward wants to come in, but if you can come in some up at the end. Chris, because I, I know obviously you've got the finance hat on at S N D C. Councillor Proudlove, and then I think we'll call this, just before Chris closes it down.
In terms of constituted, but it'd be very, very quick for Biddelf Works Together to set up as a CRC. Doesn't take very long at all. Maybe. Have the time then to tap into.
Yeah.
And if you don't mind, just to conclude, councillor Ward, because obviously this is feedback for, I second the project of.
Really, I've got an email off to the director of finance that it, it's got to be constituted groups because. You, you could get individuals applying and what we wanted to do is be more organised and, you know, so we, the grants. You know, the, the bids and the grants will be going to the right groups who are actually improving lives within the Biddelf area. So it, it, it's, and I know Biddelf Works Together is, is a great organisation, but I think what you're saying, Jill, is. If you can form some form of constitution, that would then allow them to apply to the, to the grants.
Because, sorry.
Very quickly.
Even the food bank couldn't apply for that in Biddelf because then they haven't got a constitution. So it'd have to go to the Trussell Trust. And, and they're based in Stoke. It wouldn't, money wouldn't come to Biddelf because they're not a constituted group. So we have still got issues there.
Okay, item forty-one, to receive an update on outside body meetings attended in the past month. Any updates to councillor Garvey?
Thank you, Deputy, Deputy Mayor. But just a quick update from the Fair Trade Group meeting that was held yesterday. I'm pleased to announce that the Biddelf has once again attained the. Fair Trade Community status for the next three years until July twenty twenty-six. There's another promotional cards available now to try, that may let everybody know about this. And the. Fair Trade Fortnite for the next year is actually moving to later in the year, to the autumn. But the Fair Trade Group had planned to maintain another event as, as we probably had in the February, March period for the schools competitions and, and the like. And that group was also asking specifically about the possibility of hosting another ethical fair in the town, as that was very, very well received. I think it was a. Great benefit. So raising that as a question to town council if we have the desire to organise another ethical fair. Thank you.
Picking up on the ethical fair, we have got the environment. A group meeting on Thursday. We have got representatives coming over from Lick because they've done some, you know, just to, so we can. Sort of cross fertilise ideas and things. And I certainly know that, you know, running. Ethical fairs of one form or another, environmental fairs is something which they do a lot of in the fox, in the fox leg, which you're well aware of. And I think that's something which I don't know, learning from is the right thing, but they, they've got access to different groups who. Put on slightly different things. And I think if, if we can combine his resources, we would have some absolutely fantastic. Events which we can do in the town hall. And I certainly know councillor Smith is well on that subject as well. So I'm sure we can put something together.
But when was that? Was that?
That's this Thursday, the twelfth is the environmental group meeting. Environment climate change, yes.
Thank you.
Yeah, that's fine, good. Any? Councillor Smith.
Let's disagree with you, councillor Yates, but just to mention the two ethical fairs that we've had previously have been very well attended.
Absolutely. I'm, I'm, I'm not.
Thought for collaboration, but we did do them a long time ago and very well.
Training on anybody's toes, all you're saying is, you know. Commonality and learn, so, yes. Nobody else got any reports to put forward?
Thank you.
Anything else? Excellent. Item forty-two, to approve a second councillor to complete internal. Control monitoring visits with councillor Hawley. We have got a vacancy. Councillor Rogers.
Commissioner Deputy Mayor, I'd like to nominate councillor Neil Hurley. He's got a background in managing director and CEO of a subsidiary group of Siemens. Is well established from that background, obviously. And he's available in the daytime to work with councillor Hawley. So I'd like to nominate councillor Neil Hurley, please, for that position.
Do, do we have a second there?
I'd like the second nomination, please.
If you don't mind for political balance, I'll let councillor Jackson, who, who didn't quite shoot up quite so enthusiastically. Councillor Jackson, that's fine.
And then so that councillor Lawton is now quicker than I am.
Now. Can we have a show of hands, all in favour? I think that's unanimous. Yep, okay, excellent. Congratulations. Do you know what it entails? Item forty-three, to receive an update on the referendum for the neighbourhood plan and the neighbourhood development order. Over to you, Chief Officer.
I've had an email from the district council. We reported that, as previously mentioned, that the period of consultation that they had completed since. We had agreed. On our policy changes had completed on the twenty-seventh of September and the recommendation will go to the district council. Council on the eighteenth of October. The officer will be recommending that we move towards referendum. Have an idea that that will now be before Christmas in early December. And there will be two votes. So people will be asked to vote yes or no to accept the neighbourhood plan and the neighbourhood development order. There are two different documents. And we did say if it needed to be. In the wintertime, it should be this side of Christmas because obviously we had an election in January. Not long ago, whenever that was. And it snowed that day. So anything after Christmas tends to be. Not great weather. From our perspective, the advice that I've received is that the town council cannot campaign for a yes vote. Obviously, that's a document that we have supported. We've worked with a working group to put together. But we can't actively campaign that people should vote yes. We can provide information about the document and the content of it, but we can't. We can't. Campaign for a yes vote. So from us, we need to complete the design work on the document. So we're just agreeing all of those changes within one document. I've had a quotation from the original company. That did the design of the neighbourhood plan. That's somewhere in the region of eight hundred pounds. I'm going to try and see if I can get that a bit cheaper. And I have put in a, an application for a neighbourhood plan grant, which should, if it's granted, cover the cost of that. That's that.
Are there taking questions now? A couple of things. But the, the. First question which I've got is, how do, do we send a flyer out by post to all members of the public or are we expecting? A team of volunteer leaflet distributors to. Go around because, you know, people have got to be aware that A, there's, there's effectively a. A vote at polling stations and things and you've got to have some kind of indication. Of what they're voting on to encourage them to go out, I would say, you know, just putting a note in the paper. People would miss that. Putting a note on Facebook, someone missed that, you know, for clarity and. Communication, how we get. What's, what's the modus operandi?
Previously, we've distributed things via the Biddelf Times. And although I don't think there'll be one out time, but in the right time, the volunteers who do, who usually distribute that. Can be persuaded to, to take other things out for us if we, if we ask and if we pay for that. And I think that we need to take some more advice and the councillor will have a view. I think we should publicise what the content of the neighbourhood plan is. Because otherwise we'll get very low turnout. Actually. And we do want people to understand the benefits of.
Right, okay. And just one point before we bring in, obviously postal votes, we could technically put a leaflet in with a postal vote on this because it's, could we? Does that work? Because that would, I don't know, because, is it, whatever leaflet we're doing just to promote what it is, this is. Because that would guarantee getting a little bit of a better turnout for the vote because there's a lot of postal votes now and. Just a thought. Councillor Garvey and then councillor Hawley.
Thank you, Chair. Concerned if it's going out with the Biddelf Times that they aren't actually distributing in Biddelfmore. So. So we might be missing other chunks of the population as well as. And if Biddleford more doesn't get the Biddleford Times delivered at all.
Certainly that, that's noted and I don't think it's, it says, isn't going out at the Biddleford time, but I think we've got to make sure that we, we record and cover all the catchments. And then pop up those bits which, which are missing. Councillor Hawley.
Thank you, Mr Deputy Mayor. Yeah, I would, I would expect that this is going to be treated in the same way as a normal election. So everybody's going to get voting cards. Which is going to advertise the, the fact that there is a referendum, what it's about. One thing that we've got to be very careful about is that if we do any publicity that indicates effectively. That we're supporting it, we could actually invalidate the referendum. So we've got to be extremely careful on the way we actually attack this. People from outside the council can say something or promote it in some way, but we as councillors cannot. Be effectively or sort of banned. And also from what I gather, reading through various documents on this. There's a sort of perde type of environment, like for about a month before, but basically we can't discuss it. And we, so we're going, Sarah, hopefully we'll actually get in touch with Staffordshire Malins to find out what the real rules are. But we need to be very careful and we've got to make sure that we actually stick within guidelines that are laid down. Otherwise, we could have somebody coming in and saying, oh, you broke that, you've not done that, therefore it's invalid. So that is something I am totally aware of. I must admit, when we first looked at this years ago. But my understanding was that we could actually put flyers out saying, oh, it's this, this, this and that. But obviously now, we've looked at it, we can't do anything. All we can do is say, there's a referendum. Here's the neighbourhood plan. Please have a look at it. And that's pretty, pretty much all we can do. So it, it is, it's very limiting.
What I would sort of propose is that if the chief officer speaks to the comms team at Staffordshire Malins. And at least has some kind of explanation on what the neighbourhood plan is in a very generic, but also. The written link to the website and the Q R link to the website to give people a fighting chance of actually finding it on the website and then making. You know, referring to the note on Biddleford neighbourhood plan, this is what a neighbourhood plan is about. These, this is the link. And this is a Q R code if you want a quick link on your mobile phone. And I don't, whether that's permissible or not, I don't know. But I think that's a conversation which is worth having. I think any flyer leaflet information should. Safely come from Staffordshire Malins, which has got that degree of separation, even if we end up having to pay for that flyer. As a consequence that it's our plan or having that degree of separation, my tell. I'm sure councillor Proudlove has got a. More precise interpretation of what can and what can't.
Any dialogue with staffs Malins in terms of the neighbourhood plan needs to be directed to the planning policy team, not the comms team.
Well, I will advise on, on the most appropriate, can be put, yeah. And they'll speak to the comms team and they'll devise a leaflet.
We started experience last week.
Absolutely not.
Go to the comms team first.
Okay, fair enough. Okay, okay, excellent. All right, item forty four, accounts and finance. So you've got. Two pages, one inside. Are we looking for?
Did we get something?
Supplementary. Aha, on the supplementary page, which was given out today. So you should, should all have that. And we don't go through them line by line as such, do we? So just looking at exemptions. Expenditure between five hundred pounds and five thousand pounds. Is there anything which anybody would like to raise there? Councillor Smith has got a.
Yeah, I just wanted to, to query the P R S licence for down at visitor centre. So whenever I've been in, there hasn't been any form of music there. And it seems like quite a big expense. Do we get reimbursed for that by then? Or are they planning on having music there or?
Yeah, I, we've had some quite lengthy debates with the P R S. About things that we do, if they have the radio on in any way, shape or form with any activity that, that's a standard licence that we have to pay. We don't have a set line within their rental that includes that. But we can certainly look at that. Perhaps that's another one for not set management.
Just come back, just. It's quite a substantial amount of money. If we're not being reimbursed for it, then perhaps they. Let's switch the radio off.
Councillor Fletcher, I think, yeah, you're on.
In this tale, the expenditure is between five hundred and five thousand pounds. And we've got an item R G F lower down, twelve thousand six hundred and ninety. Could that be listed separately?
Yeah, in the minutes we'll change that.
Councillor, councillor Jackson.
Right councillor, Smith got in there before me.
Councillor Jones.
Yeah, just, just add a little bit to that on the. P R S licence for the visitor centre. I, I, I go in there quite a lot. Sometimes the radio's on, sometimes it's not. I don't think it's a big deal that they pass turn it up. Have, have we spoken to Catherine to, to, we?
Yeah, I believe so.
Is it something that's, that's wanted? Because I, it's like I gave you a council, it's a chunk of money, just don't be making it up now and again.
Play a cassette.
Pardon?
Play a cassette without the licence.
I don't think you can play any sort of music without the licence, can you, I'm sorry?
Councillor Ward.
Your own composition.
Just from my information, really, I mean, on the R G S, the Lanzman's work from sixth of the eighth. Sixth of August to the seventeenth of September is twelve thousand, twelve thousand six hundred and ninety. It seems a lot of money. I mean, there's probably a, a straightforward explanation on the cost of that. So I'd just like a bit more information on that for me. And also just on the printer lease, four hundred and thirty nine. Wouldn't it be better if we bought one? Than leasing before.
Yes.
The R, the R G S invoice is full lengths work and he gets paid for the burial grounds in two chunks. So this is a second chunk of his burial ground then.
But for a month's work.
It's two things. It's the second payment for grass cutting at the Biddleford church as well. So it's the. Is it, is it nine thousand, ten thousand pounds? Every six months, I think, is it? I'll have to look at the invoice. But yeah, it's, it's all in one, one invoice there because it's in one stack.
I think as, as a clarification, it's Lanzman's work, Lanzman's work for the month, comma, and the second. Because what that do, it's not twelve thousand six hundred and ninety for that period. Part of it is for that period, which is Lanzman's work, but the main chunk is for six months' work in the, in the churchyard, which is part of the contract. So it's, it'd be ideal if you give a breakdown of both and you put it on as two itemised items, I suppose.
The invoices, aren't you, I think?
Good thing, I'm just creating, seeing that.
It does, but it, 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 it isn't. On meeting points.
No. And we have talked about this extensively and unfortunately for you, you're going to have to talk about it again because the lease is coming up for the photocopy. The, the benefit to us of leasing is that somebody just come out and fix it, which they don't have to do very often, fortunately. And touch wood, I suppose, towards the end of the life of the, of the printer they would do, but it's, it worked out when we entered into the agreement. More cost effective to do it that way. But you will have to have another look at that at some point because we're nearly at the end of that arrangement.
Councillor Sort.
Yeah, just a couple of points. Thank you. And salaries then, if we're going to be picky about between five hundred and five thousand. Sixteen thousand seven hundred and thirty, that needs to be separate of the supplementary accounts. And handles pensions contribution as well from supplementary accounts needs to be in a different place. Or maybe just change the title so, so we can, so we don't have to have three separate boxes next time. But also on that photocopy thing, in preparation for that meeting, can we have some kind of figures about how much it's costing us in? And paper and stuff and maybe make a wider discussion about I T. Because we said at the end of the last council, we'll leave it to this council and we haven't done anything with that. So I think that probably needs to be a wide discussion. Maybe reinvigorate the I T working groups to discuss photocopies and printing. Thank you. Thank you, thank you.
But any other queries? No. Excellent, moving on. Suppose you've got a question or.
John's proposing, I was second.
Right, okay. Councillor Jones proposing, councillor Garvey seconding.
On block.
On, on block. Yep. Okay. Can we have a vote, show of hands, please? That's unanimous. Thank you very much. So we now move on to confidential items. So I would like to thank all the people who've been watching the YouTube channel. Hope you found it interesting. Hope you found that. A little bit informative on what the town council gets involved in, in, in those. And we say goodbye at this stage to a town crier. Thank you, John.
Thank you.